Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' Public Meeting Tuesday, June 20, 2017. The time is now 8:13. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, notice that this meeting was published in the December 1st, 2016, issues of the Nutley Sun and the Herald News, and the December 2nd, 2016, issue of the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board, and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's Office. Commissioner Rogers. Commissioner Tucci.
Here.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Petracco.
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Here.
Well, President, Mayor.
Commissioner Petracco.
Is this our public comment?
No, just, you said you wanted to-
Oh, thank you, thank you. Yes, I just wanted to address our board and the residents that, obviously, our fire department has been very, very busy. We've had a few fires the last couple of months. Today, we had a fire right next to my deli, two doors away, and I have to be a proud parent and say that my son, Sonny, as everyone knows him, ran outside, he smelt smoke, and he went over to the residency, which was on the second floor of the fire, and he started pounding on the door to get the people out. Also, Joe Volano, our officer, who's getting up in age a little bit, responded and also went in the fire with no gear on. It was a porch fire on the second floor of the dwelling, and our police officers carry fire extinguishers in the truck, in the car, excuse me, also, and Joe was able to capture and put most of that fire out and get the two dogs that were inside and all the people out. So, it's a proud moment for me. The fire department did a great job of responding to it, too, to put the rest of it out, and it was really contained. But I have to tell you, on the quick response of our police department with Joe Volano there and my son, it was really contained, and with the wind today, it could have really got out of hand. So, I'm just a proud parent tonight, and I'm glad Joe was there to assist my son. It was really something that could have got greater. And like I said, the fire department's been very active of late, and hopefully, our little trend calms down. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Madam Clerk, Communications?
Yes, Mayor. We have the Conker Brothers Management for LLC, the Old Canal Inn, has submitted a petition to extend premises to hold a fundraiser on Sunday, July 16, 2017, from 1:00 to 8:00 p.m. on their premises, which is 2 East Besseig Avenue. I need a motion, please.
Move it.
Commissioner Rogers. Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
The Van Rappert Trust has submitted an event application to hold a street fair on Sunday, September 3, 2017, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Need a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
And Holy Family Church has submitted an application requesting permission to hold a raffle on Sunday, September 24, 2017, on their property, 28 Prop line Avenue. Need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
And that's it for Communications, Mayor.
Reports, Commissioner Evans?
Yes, I have a report for the Code Enforcement Department for the month of May, 2017.
Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, I have a shadey report for May of 2017 also.
Bills, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mayor. Bill is for Tuesday, June 20, 2017. Public Affairs, $125,642.65. Revenue and Finance, $2,395,697.10. Public Safety, $21,178.51. Public Works, $275,013.15. Parks and Public Property, $129,581.12. Total Payroll, $794,897.13, for a grand total of $3,742,966.
Ms. Bills?
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
That's it for Bills, Mayor.
Public comment on agenda items only, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of decorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Would anybody like to address the Board of Commissioners on agenda items only? Seeing none, have a motion to close this portion?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Board of Commissioner, announcements, Commissioners? Smooth resolutions, Commissioner Tucci.
Whereas the Department of Parks and Public Property has determined that there is a need to obtain services to provide the labor and equipment to mill and pave the parking lot at 44 Park Avenue, and whereas NJSA 48:11-1 requires solicitation of at least two competitive quotations when the contract amount is estimated to be below the bid threshold but above 15% of the bid threshold, and whereas the cost of the service is estimated to require solicitation of quotations, and whereas the Department of Parks and Public Property received two quotes, and whereas Crossroads Pavement Maintenance, 81 Franklin Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey, has submitted a quote indicating they will provide such services for a sum not to exceed $17,400, and whereas funds are available from account 3323K in the amount of $17,400, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners attached with Nutley County, Essex State of New Jersey, enter into a contract with Crossroads Pavement Maintenance LLC as described herein. I move the resolution.
Move it.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Evans?
Thank you. Whereas NJSA 48:5-4 requires the governing body of every local unit to have made an annual audit of its books, accounts, and financial transactions, and whereas the annual report of the audit for the year 2016 has been filed with the registered, has been filed by a registered municipal accountant with the municipal clerk pursuant to NJSA 48:5-6, and a copy has been received by each member of the governing body. Whereas RS 5227 BB34 authorizes the local finance board of the state of New Jersey to prescribe reports pertaining to local fiscal affairs, and whereas the members of the governing body have personally reviewed, as a minimum, the annual audit, and specifically the sections of the annual audit entitled "General Comments and Recommendations" as evidenced by the group affidavit form of the governing body attached here, too. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley hereby state that it has complied with NJAC 536.5 and does hereby submit a certified copy of this resolution and the required affidavit to said Board to show evidence of said compliance. We, members of the governing body of the Township of Nutley, being duly sworn according to law and upon oath, depose and say we are duly elected members of the Board, Commissioners of Township of Nutley, County of Essex, too, in performance of our duties and pursuant to NJAC 536.5, we have familiarized ourselves with the contents of the annual audit report filed with the clerk under NJSA 48:5-6 for the year 2016. We certify that we have personally reviewed and are familiar with, as a minimum, the sections of the annual report entitled "Comments and Recommendations." So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas NJSA 48:4-20 provides that where contracts, commitments, or payments are to be made prior to the final adoption of the 2017 budget, emergency appropriations may be lawfully made for the purposes and accounts required in the manner and time therein provided, and whereas a total emergency temporary resolution adopted in the year 2017 pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 96, PL 1951, NJSA 48:4-20, including this resolution, total $24,524,700, now therefore be resolved, then in accordance with NJSA 48:4-21, emergency appropriations being made in the same hereby made for the total amount of $10,995,888, that said emergency temporary appropriation will be provided for in the 2017 budget for the accounts that are individually listed within this resolution. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas NJSA 48:4-20 provides that where contracts, commitments, or payments are to be made prior to the final adoption of 2017 water utility budget, emergency appropriations may be lawfully made for purposes and amounts required in the manner and time therein provided. Whereas the total emergency temporary resolution adopted in the year 2017 pursuant to provisions of Chapter 96, PL 1951, NJSA 48:4-20, including this resolution, total $2330,76, now therefore be resolved, then in accordance with NJSA 48:4-21, emergency appropriations being the same or hereby made for the total amount of $1,165,038, and that said emergency temporary appropriation will be provided for in the 2017 water utility budget for the accounts as listed in this resolution. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
It's important to note that we have a need to continue with the temporary budget authorization, which is allowed by statute, for the purpose of awaiting a determination of our state aid. And since that hasn't come through from the state yet, and we currently are notified that it may not come before the month of July, there was a need to advance a temporary budget authorization. So just as a point of clarity, we were able to anticipate 85% of the aid that we received in 2016, which, that aid was 5.5 million. The difference is, a difference of $825,000, which is still under negotiation with the state. We continue to pursue that, however, with the state budget not being finalized, they're unwilling to commit to, one, an amount, or the timing of when we'll receive that approval. Hence, the need for those first two resolutions. Resolution number 3817, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Treasury be and she is hereby authorized to refund overpayments of tax charges in the amount of $14,728.15 for the accounts contained in this resolution. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
My final resolution is for a resolution that authorizes the issuance of a estimated third quarter-only tax bill. And the reason for this is, just as I previously stated, without the state approvals certifying the municipal budget with an aid amount, and the same holds true for the county, that without the rate being certified, we are in a position of having, as we've done in previous years, issue an estimated tax bill. Our tax bill will be estimated on the basis of the amount of revenue or aid that we've currently been authorized to receive. Our hope is that if we are able to receive the full amount of last year, that the ultimate tax rate will go down for the fourth quarter. But right now, this is representative of 100% of the budget that has been currently introduced. Whereas, due to the delay in approval of the state aid figures in the 2017 budget, the Essex County Board of Taxation is unable to certify tax rates for the year 2017. Whereas, without a 2017 certified tax rate, the tax collector of the Township of Nutley will be unable to issue the 2017 tax bills in a timely manner. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, as follows. The tax collector of the township is hereby authorized and directed to prepare and issue estimated tax bills for the Township of Nutley for the third quarter installment of 2017 taxes. The tax collector shall proceed and take action, as permitted and required by Chapter 72 Public Law 1994, NJSA 40:662, and 54:663. The total estimated tax levy for the year 2017 is hereby set, for the municipality, the county, and the school board, it's estimated at $112,644. The total estimated tax rate for 2017 is hereby set at $3.46.1 cents per hundred. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Before I read the next resolution, Commissioner Evans noted in conference, and I'd like to recognize the Clerk's Office and the Public Safety Department in making sure we got all the paperwork in through the liquor licenses that I'm about to read. So, thank you to your departments for making this done.
Thank you.
Whereas the New Jersey Department of Treasury, Division of Taxation, has provided tax clearance certificates for each establishment listed below for renewal period. Whereas these establishments have been inspected by the Board of Health, Fire Department, Code Enforcement Department, the Police Department of the Township of Nutley, and are in satisfactory condition, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the renewal of plenary retail consumption license, plenary retail distribution license, and club license be granted to the following licensees effective July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018. Be further resolved that the municipal clerk be and she is hereby directed and authorized to issue said licenses for the license period of July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018, through the establishments listed below. I move the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
I'd like to make a point on one of these license requests. We've had a multiple number of complaints at the Health Department, and I believe you at Public Safety, regard to the Huddle Sports Bar and Grill on Besseig Avenue. I think it's, what I'd like to do, if possible, is, before we vote on that particular one, that we look at the number of complaints and look at the number of Health Department complaints and Public Safety complaints. We've had a number of issues regarding the clientele that have been really upsetting that whole area. In fact, one night, Commissioner Petracco and I had to go down to the neighborhood. Everybody in their homes were out in the street because of the problems that they were facing there. So, it's just something that I would like to consider before we move forward with this, if we can scope that out.
Mr. Janet Taub?
I don't know that there are, I'm not aware of the violations, so I'm a little bit caught off guard. To the extent, if it affects the liquor license, yeah, I think you'd have a reason to. But if it's a matter of, you know, the operation of the hours and the, and the security or other things like that, you know, I'm not sure. I don't know what the violations are, and I apologize, I'm not aware of them.
Right, counsel, yeah.
I know that there are complaints by the neighbors, obviously, we're all aware of that, but if they're, technically, if their liquor license, and the Police Department has vetted this, and that's what part of their responsibility is, I would just caution that. Now, I don't know what the violations are, so, you know, if you feel they're worthy of withholding that one, but that may mean that this person cannot operate, and, you know, I think that that's going to be a strong consideration.
Well, the Health Department violations, I mean, we address that and continue to address that. I can't speak to the Police Department.
I know that through the Police Department and the Clerk's Office, before we put these up, they are vetted out for approval. It's no secret that the Police Department gets many calls from the neighborhood, and, you know, we have been there ample times. We have directed patrols where the patrolman actually has to call into our police desk, where it's recorded in our CAD system, that they're patrolling that area. You know, we're just trying to, try to find some commonplace between the bar owner and neighbors there that has been very difficult to reach. But I'm not a license expert, counsel, and I don't know that, like you said before, if it's not a violation through the ABC, that you could single that out.
Plus, you know, if the Police Department has vetted it, that's our trust mechanism to understand that they're okay with it. They wouldn't put it on this list for renewal, and if not, this business, this liquor license will not be operating after July 1. Lenny, these are required, they all expire by June 30, correct?
Yes.
So, Commissioner, my understanding is that in order to complete an application for renewal, that inspections are required, that would require the representative of the Police Department to go out to the site, as well as representatives of the Code Office to go out to the site, and they would have to be part of the package to receive a clearance from our side. But I think, you know, part of it is, this is a state-level clearance, especially on a tax clearance, that once they obtain that, they, and they have those approvals, I'm not sure if we could stop it at this point.
I realize that the owner cannot possibly be responsible for all of the behavior of clientele, I understand that.
Yeah.
But if people are going in, and they're coming out, and they're urinating on people's property, and people, particularly on enclosure, have found bottles all over their lawns, in some cases, and I'm not saying this part has anything to do with the liquor license owner, but they've seen, found drug paraphernalia, in other words, it's, it's a situation, does that affect the liquor license? I don't know, I'm asking, would that affect the way they're operating? Is that something out of the bounds of the liquor license? This is why I'm, I'm asking these questions, so that we could look into this, and if there, if there are enough ample complaints that are affecting the entire area, and we're talking about Grand Avenue, the enclosure, Besseig Avenue, we've been, we've been there multiple times.
I appreciate that, too. I am very, very much aware of some of the challenges, and I think Commissioner Petracco said it quite well, how do you strike a balance between a business that's operating within the constructs of a residential area? And whether or not it should be allowed to be there to begin with is a broader question, and, you know, that door's already open. But the reality, there is a reality to it. So, I fully appreciate my, you know, just as a comment, what you're raising, I'm just not sure whether or not we have the ability to stop it at this point.
Okay.
And I don't have any knowledge of any ABC viola, excuse me, Commissioner, I'm sorry, ABC violations for this particular liquor license, which might give reason or pause to the Police Department to clear it for, you know, renewal. So, your point is well taken, but I think we have to address it in a different way.
Okay, thank you.
I think every business, whether they're, whether they're a liquor license business, the owner's serving liquor, owes it to be a good neighbor. And I think, Commissioner knows this, you know, you have to be a good neighbor, you have to go and make sure your neighbors are happy, and I think it's incumbent upon the owner to be a good neighbor, and I think we should stress that point to them. I don't know if, I don't know if this is the right venue in order to get that accomplished, though.
This is another comment, if I may, too, you know, you're right, as far as being a good neighbor and having a deli in town, you know, I'm constantly out there with the cars and litter and things like that. When I had my bar in Lynnhurst, to your point, Commissioner Rogers, is that, you know, we were in our parking lots and our surrounding area picking up bottles and picking up, you know, debris. So, you know, she's, I believe it's a woman that owns that, counsel? Yeah, I believe it's a woman, and I know that Captain Green, a lot of detectives, have talked to her and encouraged her to, you know, police that area herself a little bit. This way, her patrons aren't getting chased out of town, because when the police go there, they're issuing summons and things like that. But I have to tell you, I'm starting to think that it's falling on deaf ears.
Well, that's my point. We have a neighborhood, we have derish streets, residents, multiple, multiple complaints, maybe it doesn't fall within the purview of the license. And it's pretty upsetting to them. Frankly, if I lived there, I would probably sell my house. I mean, I really would. That's how bad the situation is. So the question is, and I, and point is well taken, Mayor, we just heard Commissioner Petracco say it's probably falling on deaf ears, and I believe that, what do we do to help our residents? And believe me, I realize that with regard to the law and the ABC violations that's made effective, what do we do?
So, Commissioner, I would offer that we revisit our ordinance, our local ordinance, to make sure it's strong enough to make, make it clear that if you are going to operate a business, that there are maybe things that are supposed to, that we need to address with greater clarity around what it means to be a business owner who's operating in good standing, right? For all businesses, not just the one, the one business, but for all businesses in town. I would look to pull out that ordinance, and I'll take a look at it with, with counsel, and to see what we can come up with, and we can discuss it at a future meeting.
That's, that's fine, okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So we need a motion?
Second, I move the resolution.
Commissioner Rogers?
I'm voting on all but the Huddle Sports Bar, which I will vote no.
Commissioner Tucci?
I will also vote on everything but the Huddle Sports Bar, if that's legal. I'll abstain on that one.
Commissioner Evans?
I will, I'll vote on the ordinance, but I will qualify my vote on the fact that we have to review the ordinance, as we suggested, and make sure it's clear as part of the adoption, that we will revisit that. And just as a side, I don't want to miss the, the opportunity to, I said in the back, but I wanted to commend Captain Green for the significant effort, along with the municipal clerk, in actually getting all of the licenses to the point where they've received all of the necessary, necessary approvals to be renewed this evening. There's no, there's no licenses that are outstanding, and recognizing that July holiday's coming, that these businesses, you know, will obviously continue to be able to operate. But having said that, I vote yes with the qualification that we'll review the ordinance.
Commissioner Petracco?
I will follow suit with the Board and abstain from voting on the Huddle, and vote yes for the rest of the ordinance.
Mayor Scarpelli?
I'll vote the same way, Madam Clerk.
So you're abstaining on?
Yes.
Okay.
Just a procedural clarification. If four members of the Board abstain from voting, and one qualification is to review the ordinance, what does that do with regard to that one application? I never would.
We do have a quorum, and if all four abstained, it's, I believe it would be a yes vote. If there's one positive vote and four abstain, unless you're voting no on the resolution, instead of abstaining, and you don't want to support renewing that license, you should vote no, not abstain.
We have one no vote.
If that's the rule- One no vote and one yes vote, then it's, that does not pass.
If that's the rule, can we revote, then?
If you'd like to rescind your vote, and the madam, and the clerk was willing to redo the vote, you can do that, we're still here.
So, sure. I'd like to revoke.
Revote.
Madam Clerk, we call, let's call the roll again.
Okay. So we need a second.
I second it.
Commissioner Rogers?
No. Yes on all except the Huddle is a no.
Commissioner Tucci?
Yes on all except Huddle, which I'll vote no, as long as it's legal.
Commissioner Evans?
I'll vote yes on all, and I'll vote no on the Huddle with the qualification that we review the ordinance, and I agree with Commissioner Tucci, as long as we're legally allowed to do that.
Commissioner Petracco?
I will follow suit again, vote no. I vote yes on all of them except for the Huddle, again, as quoted by Commissioner Evans, as long as it's legal, legal to do that.
And Mayor Scarpelli?
I'm going to vote the same way, Madam Clerk, and I offer to have a meeting with the Huddle, to see if we can resolve some of the issues.
Thank you.
Whereas raffle applications have been received from the following organizations: Holy Family Church, license number 3117. Carnival Games and Money Wheel from Thursday, September 21 through Sunday, September 24, 2017. Holy Family Church, license number 3217, on-premise 50/50 cash license, cash raffle to be held Thursday through Sunday, September 21 through the 24. Whereas the application will be reviewed and approved by municipal clerk and the Police Department, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the aforementioned licenses are approved, the municipal clerk is authorized to issue the raffle license. I move the resolution. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakos?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Whereas certain federal funds are potentially available to the County of Essex under Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, as amended, and Home Investment Partnership Act of 1990, as amended. Whereas Township Nutley desires to participate in the Essex County, Urban County, for conducting certain community development activities for program years 2018 through 2020. And whereas letters been drafted by the mayor to the Essex County Division of Housing and Community Development, notifying them of the township's desire to participate in this process. Whereas the grantee or the unit of general local government that directs or indirectly receives CDVG funds may not sell, trade, or otherwise transfer all and any such portion of such funds to another metropolitan city, urban county, unit of general local government, or Indian tribe, or insular area, that directly or indirectly receives CDVG funds in exchange for any other funds, credits, or non-federal considerations, must use the funds for activities, as well under Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, as amended. And whereas the Emergency Shelter Grants Program, provided through Subtitle B of Title IV of the McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance Act, permits for substantial federal funds allocated to prevent homelessness and enable homeless individuals or families to move towards independent living. Whereas the current internal local service agreement contains an automatic renewal clause to expedite the notification of the inclusion process. Whereas by May 5th, 2017, each municipality must notify the Essex County Division of Housing and Community Development of its intent to continue as a participant in the urban county entitlement programs noted above. And whereas it is in the best interest of the township of Nutley and its residents to participate in said programs, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township Nutley, County of Essex, that hereby authorizes the mayor to execute the attached cooperation agreement, notifies Essex County Division of Community Development of its decision to be included as a participant municipality in the urban county entitlement programs, being the Community Development Block Run Program and Home Investment Partnership Act programs, years 2018, 19, 2020, from June 2018 through May 31st, 2020, and be further resolved that a copy of the resolution be forwarded to the Essex County Division of Housing and Urban Development no later than June 28th, 2017. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakos?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Whereas bids for the 2016 various roadway improvements were received and opened on Wednesday, June 15th, 2016, that should be June 15th, 2017. And whereas AJM, I'm probably right, 2016, whereas AJM Contractors, 300 Color Road, Clifton, New Jersey, was the low bidder, whereas Township Nutley entered into contract with AJM Contractors for the amount of $733,829.95. Whereas change order number one from the base bid has been authorized for a decrease in the amount of $81,347.59. Alternate number one has been authorized for a decrease in the amount of $11,097.11. Alternate number two has been authorized for a decrease in the amount of $9,346.92. Alternate number three has been authorized for a decrease in the amount of $29,858.44. And alternate number four has been authorized for an increase in the amount of $17,545.70. Whereas the original contract is being decreased in the amount of $75,981.80 to be credited to ordinance number 3321A, and a decreased amount of $38,122.56 to be credited to ordinance number 33295A, for a total change order amount of $114,104.36, and adjusted contract price of $619,725.59. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that change order number one is attached, is a change from the contract previously made by the Township of Nutley with AJM Contractors for the project known as the 2016 various roadway improvements, and are hereby authorized and approved, and move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakos?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the township clerk is hereby authorized to advertise for sealed bids for Harrison Street, Franklin Avenue to Plumfield Avenue, Township of Nutley, to be received on behalf of the Board of Commissioners and Commission Chambers, Township Hall, 1 Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey, 07110, on Wednesday, July 12th, 2017, at 3:00 p.m. prevailing time, at which time they will be open and read, and move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakos?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Whereas bids for the 2017 various roadway improvements were received and opened on Wednesday, June 14th, 2017. And whereas DNL paving contractors 675 Franklin Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey, was the low bidder. Whereas the base bid for the 2017 various roadway improvements was in the amount of Alternate bid number one in the amount of $17,269.25. And alternate bid number two in the amount of $45,771.09, for a total bid of $430,759.49. And whereas funds are available from ordinance number 3321A, in the amount of $23,395.37. Ordinance number 2800, in the amount of $9,766.41. Ordinance number 2959, in the amount of $20,130.54. And ordinance number 3295A, in the amount of $377,467.17. Have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer. Said certification be attached to this resolution, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that a contract be awarded to DNL paving contractors 675 Franklin Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey, not to exceed $430,759.49, and that the mayor and township clerk are hereby authorized to enter into and sign said contract for Township Nutley, and move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakos?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. That concludes the business portion of our meeting. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding a community concern should approach the microphone, provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks to the board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the board shall be allowed unless the mayor presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the board shall determine that the interests of the quorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Would anybody like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Mr. Scarpelli, I wish to address the Board of Commissioners tonight. I'm not asking any questions, I don't expect any answers, and I would appreciate no interruptions. It's time to fire Paul Cofone. I think we made the paper for all the wrong reasons. We pay Mr. Cofone $175,000 a year. We pay approximately $220 a month for his phone. We gave him a brand-new Crown Vic recently. He hired his son, who was number 15 on a list, over 14 other people, some who were-
One second, Mr. Moore. Mr. Giannantempo, we have to worry about talking about employees?
Well, unfortunately, you cannot talk about it without a right to this. But, Mr. Moore, I think you're teetering on being out of order. First of all, your facts aren't necessarily correct, vis-a-vis the list.
It would be 14 or 15, if you want to argue the-
Well, I was involved in that review initially, because I do review civil service lists, and everything was appropriate with regard to the list.
He was number 15 on the list, correct? He was number 15 on the list.
Just because you're 14 or 15, doesn't mean that you've skipped anybody, because people fall off the list, they don't respond, they didn't qualify.
But they didn't respond, actually, everybody did.
They didn't qualify.
I don't really want to argue the point.
I'm just trying to-
I have a public opinion. I have a right to freedom of speech, under the five-minute rule.
They get jobs in other towns, also.
I understand that we're going to hire-
Continue, Mr. Moore.
I understand that we're contemplating hiring number 16. There were veterans on the list above that weren't hired. We have to replace, I believe it's going to be a $1.5 million fire truck, a trashy fire truck, and nobody's going to be disciplined because of this? We purchased a truck a while ago, under one bid, and I'm sure you'll do that again this year, with this truck. At this point, don't you think it's rather incumbent upon the Board of Commissioners to think about the people of the town, rather than your friends? Because this is outright incompetence. Mr. Henin has spoke to you before, and argued vehemently with Mr. Giannantempo, about the incompetency of the record-keeping of the fire department. But yet, we're going to sit here and say, no problem, nobody's disciplined, this is the way it's supposed to work? Well, it's not. This is an absolute embarrassment. Mr. Petrakos, you just told the story of a fire two doors away. Your son and Mr. Vilano, I believe it was, you told of they're heroics. They should never have been gotten, you told of they're heroics. They should never have gotten that close to the fire, because the fire department should have been there already. Do you mean to tell me that the amount of money that we pay for the paid fire department-
The deli's right next door to the house.
Okay. For them to get there, that close, to run upstairs and help save two dogs and put a fire out, tells you that the response time isn't all that long.
We respond anywhere in the town, under two minutes. I mean, that's a fantastic response time. I've been in other towns where you're waiting for a fire department-
Either it's a fantastic response time, or your son and Mr. Vilano are very fast runners. They should never-
They were very fast-acting, to be honest with you.
I'd like to finish my five, if I may. At this point, I understand that the chief, who was only paid $5,000, might retire shortly, so I hear. And that Mr. Cofone will become the chief, and he wants to hire three more chiefs. Don't you think it's time to consider the people, rather than your friends? This is an outright embarrassment, thanks to Mr. Cofone, and it's time to fire him for incompetence. Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
My property backs up to the property that runs over Clover. And there have been trucks back there, doing demolition on the buildings and everything else that was back there. My problem is, there's a slew of trees that are vacuumed up along the fence. Two and three deep now. I have vines with stickers on them, I have ivy, only God knows where it came from, and I have poison ivy. My gardeners won't even come in and weed back there for me, and I can't do it. I need help. I need to know if, number one, is there someone that I could contact to find out if I can get something done from the people who have taken over that property? If not, what can I do? Who can help me?
Mayor?
Mister?
I want to get your full name and your address, again, and your contact number, because I will have-
My name is Diana Baycells.
I'll get it.
You can get it from her.
Yep.
Okay.
And I don't want you to give me your phone number over the microphone, but I would like to-
973-
Okay, if you want to.
941-
97-
3427. It's my cell.
973-941-
3427. It's my cellphone. I have that more than-
I'll have the, tomorrow, you'll hear from the construction code office, we have a property maintenance ordinance, and so whatever is allowable under that ordinance, we'll be happy to share that with you.
Oh, that would be wonderful, because as the mayor, I'm not really physical enough to be able to do any of that stuff, but I do need some help with it.
I understand that. The construction that you see is actually demolition work. Being in that area, you are familiar with the fact that there were a series of old chicken coops that were on the property.
Yeah, that's all gone, thank God.
Yes. We actually gave them a violation of those for unsafe structures, and so that the owner had, at their expense, hire an exterminator to make sure there wasn't anything living there, and then actually incur the cost to remove them. So right now, I understand, as of today, there's just some piles of debris that are being removed.
You know, where are the critters back there?
Well, it's an open area, so you're going to find natural critters.
Well, I have seen, please, I'm not telling stories here. I can see a little brown thing. I'm not afraid of snakes, but there are children in town here.
I am.
I do appreciate any help I can get.
Absolutely, I will have to, they'll contact you tomorrow.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Before we break, Mayor, I just wanted to report to the Board of Commissioners, and congratulate all the Board of Commissioners and Commissioner Tucci on the Spring Festival. There was not one episode to report at that whole night. It was really well done. I applaud the family theme, with bringing the kids into it, with the video games and all that stuff, but there was, I had a great time, I hope everybody else did, and it's really something I hope continues down the road.
Thank you, Commissioner. Being that you brought it up, I'd just like to thank all of the commissioners for supporting that, and in particular, the Public Safety Department, and Commissioner Petrakos, for the police protection, the fire department being there, the EMS, the Health Department for making sure that all the trucks and all the establishments were A1 and super clean. It was a great night. There were in excess of 5,000 people there. It was probably our most successful event ever. And these are the type of things that separate Nutley from a lot of the other communities. And this is something we're going to continue, we're going to build upon it, and the family theme, I think, was spot-on, and it was just a fantastic night, and even the weather cooperated. So thank you for that.
And to follow up, Commissioner Tucci, one goal I know you had, and was achieved, it was family. There were families there, and you don't see much of that around anymore, where parents are able to bring their children to a safe environment and have a lot of fun, so I think that was a very important goal, and you achieved it.
Thank you.
Before we adjourn, I have a comment. To begin with, 38 years of my life I spent in the Public Safety Department. I worked with just about everybody who's there now, and Paul Cofone happens to be one of the people that I work with. It troubles me that when people, especially our employees, are criticized, and they're not here to defend themselves. I certainly don't like being criticized when I'm not there to defend myself. But I will say this, because I've been there, and I've worked there, and because I know this Commissioner, and the fact that he prides himself in competent people, Paul Cofone is probably the farthest thing from being incompetent, unable to do his job. It's a tough, tough job, being in public safety today, whether you're police or firefighter. Paul Cofone has done nothing but serve this town with dignity and honor and good character. We may not necessarily agree with some of the decisions our employees make, and some of the performance that certainly they will display over a period of time, but that's up to the Public Safety Director to address. But overall, this has been a very good man, and a very good employee, a good family man. And I'll tell you one other thing, that I certainly, I think all of us, we don't probably see it, but a guy like Paul Cofone, our police chief and others, a lot of these men and women in our Public Safety Department, in fact, Joe, Mayor, in your department, and Commissioner Tucci, and Commissioner Evans, and Commissioner Petrakos, and all of our departments, we have role models. We have a lot of good role models, good family people, and they'll just go out of their way, they'll just go out of their way to help anybody in this town. But to the point of Paul Cofone, people are watching on television, something new. And unfortunately, when they watch, they leave away with one narrative. And I think it's important that we give them the other narrative. So Commissioner Petrakos, you're too close to it to say anything, but I was close to it, I'm out of it. But I just want to convey to the people of this town, and I know you all know this, and I know I'm preaching to the choir here, but it's for the people in this town, know that you have heroes in this town every day, every day. They do their job without fanfare, and in Mr. Cofone's case, he's a darn good guy. And let me say this, your son and that police officer were probably seconds away, but instead of walking away, they went in, and they should never, ever be criticized for doing that. That's all I have to say, Mayor, and I move that we close the meeting, if that's okay.
I just like to thank Commissioner Rogers, and for obviously reasons, I am not privy to comment on the comments that were made tonight, but down the road, I surely will comment, and I have to say, I think some of the comments are really just purely not nice.
We need a second?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakos?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And the time is 9:02.
Night, everybody. Thank you so much.